Good evening. Welcome to Albany City Council Work Session, March 21st, 2022 at 4:00 PM. Can I have a, I'm calling the meeting to order in a roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson? I don't think she's hearing.
You're way too faint.
Yeah, I can't hear you either.
Counselor Johnson?
I'm here, but I can't hear you.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Olson?
There you go.
Counselor Olson?
Here!
Counselor Novak?
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Here.
Mayor Johnson II?
Here. First, before I get started, I wanted to thank everyone for attending this evening. But we are going through a new process for us. It's been over a year since we had one of these meetings. So we're in the process of learning to figure this hybrid system out. So your patience is greatly appreciated. Business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments and/or register to speak at the website provided on the agenda before noon of the day of the meeting or appear in person at the meeting and register to speak using the sign-up sheet. Has anyone signed up to speak today? No one signed up to speak today, then I'll move on. The next agenda item is review of citizen advisory groups. City Manager Peter Trottson and Mary Dibble on page two of your packet for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And may I also add how good it is to be back here and to see you all in person. Council last reviewed our advisory groups in 2019. And we have a little bit of time this afternoon, a limited amount of time, to accomplish two goals. The first is to provide some education with respect to the purpose of our advisory groups and the variety of those groups, a little bit of their history, when they're authorizing or enabling legislation. The second one is to provide some options for optimizing our system of advisory groups, taking a more strategic look at the system as a whole and keeping in mind the imperative of good stewardship of our resources. Now, Mary has done most of the work on this project, so I'm going to turn it over to Mary, Okay, Mr. Mayor, we're experiencing technical difficulties, as Mary said. So may I suggest that if Chris is ready, we reverse the order of the agenda.
Director Bailey, are you ready to speak with us this evening? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pivot to Director Bailey, Public Works Director. We're going to speak on the Vine Street right-of-way on page three and five, three to five on your packet. So thank you so much, Director Bailey, for being prepared.
And Mayor, before we, before we do that, we had someone that was here to speak from business from the public on this topic, actually, it's about this topic, and they didn't sign up because it was live, they didn't know they had to sign up, but they're in the audience and they wanted to...
So for the Vine Street project?
Yeah. Is that okay to?
Is Council okay with that?
Sure.
Council's okay with that, so I am as well.
Thank you.
So thank you. So she will have Director Bailey do her presentation first, then we'll give you an opportunity to say, is that okay with you? Excellent, thank you very much. Director Bailey?
Hello, okay. Counselor Olson, can you hear me?
I don't see Counselor Olson anymore on my screen.
Okay, well, I'll get started. And you can tell me if I have to start over. Counselor Johnson, can you hear me? Counselor Olson?
Yes, I can.
Yes!
Oh, Counselor Olson, you don't have to yell. We can hear you just fine.
Well, I answered you before, you didn't hear.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. This is an update on the discussion regarding the Vine Street right-of-way that we brought to the council on December 13th. As a reminder, the impetus for that discussion was a request for a license to occupy the right-of-way from an adjacent property owner who wanted to build a fence across the right-of-way at Sixth Avenue. The council denied that request and directed staff to come back with a plan to notify adjacent property owners about what is and is not allowed in the right-of-way, work with neighbors who have taken over the right-of-way for their personal use and storage, such as vehicles and property, and notify anyone with temporary obstructions that we may demand that they remove those at any time when the city needs to reclaim the right-of-way. So in the staff memo, you can see we did a survey along the entire right-of-way from Third Avenue down to Queen, and we identified five adjacent properties that have significant encroachments into the right-of-way. For those properties, what we're suggesting to do is to work with them to remove their items, and that, we estimate, would take probably up to six months. Those items include a permanent structure that was built in our right-of-way, which is probably the hardest option or obstacle to get out, as well as multiple vehicles, campers, and other personal items. So we'll have to work with each property owner to come up with a plan to make sure that they remove their items from the right-of-way, and that is going to be somewhat difficult and time-consuming. For the other properties, our recommendation is to send letters to those that have smaller items in the right-of-way, which are typically like small plants or shrubbery. So we could send them a letter telling them that the right-of-way is the city's to use for transportation and related purposes, and we may be asking them to remove those items at their cost at some point in the future. We believe that this plan addresses the concerns that you brought up in December, and will protect the right-of-way and then we can use it for the community's good purposes, as it was intended. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
So would you allow us to speak with the person that showed up to speak before we ask our questions?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Ma'am? Please identify yourself, don't need your address, just... Nice to meet you.
You're not going to be able to hear her. Sir? Yeah.
We have a property on Vine. The house, the property behind us, has encroached with their home and shop. So in the 30 years that we have been there, that has never been a through road. We would like, we are the property that is trying to put a fence, put a gate, to protect our property, to protect our children, grandchildren, family. And there's a lot of people that come from the hospital in the middle of the night, they see, oh, there's a road here, there must be a road here, but there's nowhere to go because of that fence, the neighboring property. So now they're on our property, going from that city easement. It's just a protection matter. Since there's nothing is going to happen right now with that structure, we would just like to be able to use that until that time comes to put a gate to protect our family. We are doing a lot of remodeling, we had to redo the foundation. So the yard does look a little bit in disarray right now. It's in the process of becoming beautiful again. But this is, you know, one of the steps that needs to take place. Of course, you know, like we had said before, I had several different conversations with Gordon, the second we're told this is going to happen within X amount of time, that fence, that gate comes out, totally fine. But until that time, it just kind of makes sense to allow that.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's okay. We're all nervous, so don't even worry about it. Counsel, you have any questions for her at all? Mackenzie, what's your last name, Mackenzie, again?
Freshcorn.
Fresh, okay. Counsel, any questions? Comments?
Just...
Counselor Olson has always hand first.
I, I didn't get the address that she was talking about.
So what's your property's address?
636 Sixth Avenue.
Okay. 636, you got it?
Yes, thank you.
Any questions, Counselor Johnson or Counselor Olson? Any questions for either one of you?
Well, I did, I mean, this is an infraction of our city's right-of-ways, and so whether it happens tomorrow, or, you know, maybe six months from now, I'm thinking that we need to start acting on it now because it's something that's not been legal for all this time. And unfortunately, it hadn't been dealt with before, but I'm thinking that we need to be across the board, the same with everyone. I'm thinking about the bushes and stuff like that, too. I mean, whether people didn't know it was a right-of-way, I'm not sure. I can understand how that could happen, but I think we need to be consistent with all the affected people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So any other counsel have anything? Okay, so I see Counselor Kupczynski and then Counselor Smith.
Yes, I like the thought that Director Bailey put into coming up with a solution on this. I think six months is an ample amount of time, or should be, to have these processes taken care of. And it's, I think it's a reasonable solution for the problem that's been ongoing, so I have no problem in supporting this.
So Ms. Freshcorn, I'm sorry, you can sit down, I'll have Director Bailey come up as she can respond to...
Can I say one thing?
Please, go ahead.
Just in response to...
Yes.
...what she had said. Like I said, in the 30 years that we've been there, the city has come on our property three times, and we have maintained that easement, we've maintained the side of the fence line. Of course, the city, you know, has had workers come out to do the, now the water side.
Support, yeah.
But we've maintained it, we have kept it clean, we have kept, we even reinforced that fence line that was falling over. Nobody has reimbursed us for any of the time, labor, and product that we had, supplies that we had used. So it just, you know, until that time comes that it is going to go through, it just makes sense to me, in my opinion, since we have been maintaining it all this time, to continue to allow us until that opens up on the other side of the fence.
Well, I would like to hear from Director Bailey, because she's the one coming, bringing a plan to us.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for participating and bringing your information. So Director Bailey, you've heard everything. We'd love to hear your plan.
Well, so the plan would be to work with the Freshcorns and the four other property owners that we identified that have large obstructions that have to be removed, to give them the time to rearrange their things. Like I said, the property to the south of the Freshcorns is the, going to be the hardest property. We think they do have a shop or some kind of detached structure that was built into the right-of-way that's going to have to be removed, which is no, you know, small thing. And then there are, there are other properties that have things like, you know, cedar fences that are across the right-of-way or vehicles. So the plan would be to work with all of them to get those obstructions out of the right-of-way and then open it so that vehicle traffic can go through.
Counsel? Counselor Smith?
I was going to agree with Counselor Kupczynski that six months is a reasonable time to get that done, and I think that also should address Counselor Johnson's concern about treating everybody the same and maybe starting the clock right now.
Okay, sure.
Thank you very much. Counselor Olson, go ahead, please.
Yes, I, I'd like to agree with the proposal. And I would also like to say that fixing up our canals was originally part of our urban renewal plan, which has been sidelined, I am sad to say. And I'm a fan of Rick Steves' programs that we see on public broadcasting. And so many times, cities that have waterways and water features, they're fixed up so they're an attraction rather than a discouraging negative thing like our main canal is there. So I would hope that sometime in the future, that would happen here in Albany, and I would like to see these right-of-ways preserved so that that can happen sometime in the future. So yes, I agree with the plan.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Counselor Johnson, you have a comment? Counselor Bartholomew? We're all good. So it sounds like, can I get thumbs up for a six-month stay until things are moved out of the right-of-way? Thumbs up, please?
Right.
So it looks like that's going to work for us.
So we'll get started right away, and then we'll, we'll bring it back to you if we have any issues.
Thank you very much, Freshcorn.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, are we ready with the presentation for the citizen advisory group?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got a four-digit code that we have to plug in, and it changes every minute or so. So I think we're ready.
That's why it goes off and on. So whenever you're ready. You're, you're not in presentation, you're not in presentation mode. It's off, it's back to council chambers. Looks like the Vault 244 is upstairs. We'll be back on shortly, Counselor Olson and Counselor Johnson, he's fixing the technology.
Well, I'm sorry I didn't get there today. I, I thought we were starting public, we're being in the council chamber on Wednesday.
And I would like to, I would like to say that it is so important that, and I'm guilty of it myself when I'm there, to make sure that the microphone is really close, because when Counselor Smith was talking, she did lean into it later in her talk, but it was very difficult to hear. So that's something that we have to work on. Thank you.
Guilty.
Okay, now we have the technology up. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Peter Trottson and Mary Dibble, and I believe Mary Dibble will be doing the presentation.
No.
No.
Is there some way I can see Mary Dibble in person?
Well, at this point, it has to be the PowerPoint or the person, so we have the PowerPoint up. The PowerPoint?
Counselor Olson, can you see the PowerPoint?
Oh, there it is, in tiny, tiny print.
Thank you, Counselors, for your patience. As the memo in your packet describes, the council asks for an occasional review of the purpose of our citizen advisory groups, we also call them CAGs. And the timing is good, because there are other, there are two other drivers, resources and recruitment, which makes this an opportune time for review, and we'll get to that in our last slide. There are basically three types of advisory groups, those required by state law, those necessary for compelling business reason, and then special ad hocs, which are also known as working groups. Albany has 19 CAGs. The CAGs are on the city's website, and each includes a description. Rather than paste them here, we provided them to you by email this afternoon to the counselors, and we also have a copy on your dais, on the dais. You'll see descriptions that match exactly what's on the website. And for our public, if you go to the city's website and look on the citizen advisory group tab, you'll see those same descriptions. Two that are not on the screen before you are the hearings board and the audit committee. And the reason we don't have them here is because we do not actively recruit for those two boards. Rather, they are comprised of members from the planning commission, commission, and the budget committee, and used only as needed. So working across the top of the page on the PowerPoint, you'll see when each group was established, when they were created, or, excuse me, how they were established, when they were created, the minimum staffing required, and how often they meet. And I wanted to point out that the meeting frequency is misleading for two reasons. And first of all, there are times when the agenda is not produced due to lack of items, so they don't meet, or other times the agenda is produced and there is a lack of a quorum, so people arrive to the meeting either virtually or in person.
Mary, could you, could you get a little bit closer to the mic? Literally, move, just move the whole thing right up to you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Much. Thank you.
Thank you. Other times, there's a, the agenda is produced, and folks come to the meeting and there's not a quorum, so they cannot continue with the meeting. On this slide, we've removed the budget committee, the building board of appeals, care advisory board, community development commission, the landmarks commission, the library board, planning, and the joint Albany Millersburg group. And we've talked so far briefly about the purpose of the CAGs, and so now we were going to talk about resources and recruitment, which you'll see on the bottom of the page. So first of all, in terms of resources, we're so thankful for all of our volunteers, that's you and all of our members, and we recognize that their time is valuable. And as you can see on this slide, it takes approximately two employees to staff each CAG meeting. And when we move the CAGs to hybrid format in the near future, it's going to bring other considerations for how we use our resources, such as opening city facilities for a hybrid meeting, and perhaps only two people show up in person. These are things that we're going to be working through in the near future. In terms of recruitment, it's been a challenge for staff and counselors for a while, and many of you know the challenge it is to recruit for some of our CAGs. And when we try to appeal to new members, a part of the challenge is they look at the calendar and they'll see that there's 12 meetings, when in reality, perhaps that particular CAG doesn't actually meet that many times. This makes it difficult to, at times, recruit people to the position at all, and also makes it difficult for counselors to find folks. For this reason, combining some of the groups or making other changes would be helpful with our resources and recruitment issues. And so finally, this is our last page, and these are some of the options for you to consider. One suggestion has been to create a transportation commission. This would include traffic safety, bicycle and pedestrian, and airport. Another option is, an additional option, I should say, is to consolidate parks and recreation and the tree commission. And then finally, we could create an economic development advisory commission, and we could transition the transient lodging tax into that new group. And I'm turning it over to Peter now.
Okay, thank you, Mary. These, these options that you see here have been conceived after careful consideration of our needs with respect to community engagement, but also after our strategic planning workshop of earlier this year, and then also looking at resource constraints. If any of the options or an option look or sound interesting to council, I would request the council's direction to move toward that goal or those goals, and to bring back a plan or plans to accomplish those changes. And again, when you look at the fact that we're building a strategic plan right now, what we're trying to, what those options looked at was trying to look at our structure of advisory groups in a strategic way, trying to be strategic about how we have them focus on certain functions and what they look at over the future. In the meantime, staff will be taking administrative steps to reduce the frequency of meetings to, to match advisory group workloads. So you saw that many of them meet on a monthly basis. Well, if there just isn't enough in terms of a workload to do that, we'll shift that to quarterly or once every two months. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your attention, and Mary or I are happy to take any questions you might have.
Counsel, I have Counselor Kupczynski first up. Thank you, Peter.
Yes, Mayor and City Manager, as you're visioning some of these consolidations, some of these, by definition, almost are semi-specialized for what they, what they're intended to do. Do you see a similar number of volunteers or people from the community in the expanded group, because they may have some individual expertise versus a combined group?
No, that's, that's a potential downside. I mean, you have, now with 19 groups, you have 19, roughly 19 times seven opportunities for individuals to be involved. But if you take a transportation commission, for example, and you create that transportation commission out of the three committees or commissions that you saw there, you would lose then 14 volunteer positions, right? You follow that? You'd have a commission of, say, seven people, whereas before you had three commissions for a total of 21. So it, it does create fewer opportunities for individuals to be involved. On the other hand, it creates very meaningful work for those people that are involved. Right now, when we have commission meetings, we often have to cancel, as, as Mary talked about in the beginning, either for lack of a quorum, or because there simply isn't enough on the agenda to warrant getting together and meeting. So again, this is just an attempt to try to, one, be good stewards of our resources, but two, also to be strategic about how we construct these advisory groups.
I agree with the concept. My only concern is what you alluded to, that we might lose some...
Yes.
...citizen expertise that we have now, because they're no, no longer able to be actively, as actively involved, although they could still have direct access to whoever's on the commission, for sure.
Well, I would, I would point out that you don't actually lose the expertise. I mean, that expertise should be available within the community, and if we do our engagement efforts appropriately, we'll seek people in the community who have that level of expertise. And the other thing I have to point out is that this system, if you saw the column in one of Mary's slides that talked about when these groups were formed, there was one formed in 1957, many formed in the early 90s, some in the 80s. All of those were well before our social media capabilities and our current engagement capability. So we have other aspects or other means of conducting community engagement, and they're pretty ample means as well.
If I might add something really quick to the, for example, the transportation commission that we were suggesting, there's vacancy, current vacancies on some of those boards as well. So in some cases, it would be, it would mean not having to fill positions that we've not been able to fill. So I see Marilyn nodding, so I think she is where.
I see Counselor Johnson nodding as well.
Yeah.
I appreciate your thought going into this, so I, I agree that we do need to do some consolidation, so thank you.
So Counselor Johnson was first and Counselor Novak? Counselor Johnson, Counselor Johnson?
First of all, I want to thank staff, Mary, Peter, for actually working this up. It's, it looks good. I think it's going to be beneficial. I didn't get the slides and stuff, at least I couldn't find them anyways, so, and it was kind of hard to read on the PowerPoint. But I think consolidating is good. Like you said, I had no idea that they were formed way back when, and so, yeah, it might be a time for change. But I guess I'd ask, okay, if it would be seven, seven on, consolidate three boards or commissions to one, would seven be enough? Or could there be, with these three, maybe go with 14 instead of seven? I mean, I don't know, it's just an idea I'm thinking of, that, that way you wouldn't, it might give more people an opportunity, but right now, I'm saying people have the opportunity. I mean, I finally had a guy for the traffic commission, I finally had a guy, and then he had to pull out. So it's one of those things. But I like the idea of consolidation, and if it's feasible, I think I would be in, in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Counselor Olson was next up.
Excuse me, Counselor Novak.
Yeah. You gave us these detailed...
You gave us these detailed lists of every last citizen advisory group, but I would really, it would be helpful to have what you put on the screen with this consolidation, this consolidation, you had three blocks. That would be really helpful to be able to refer to that, because I don't remember, now that you took it off the screen, for the life of me, I can't remember what all was consolidated into which group, and I don't know which have been axed completely, because that's information that would have been even more helpful than the 19 groups that I know exist. If there's a way to show that on the screen again, I would be able to discuss it with a little more wisdom.
It's in front of you, Counselor.
Okay, it's over here?
Yes.
Has it been here this whole time, and I didn't know it?
No, they just put it back up for you.
All right, thank you. So, how many citizen advisory groups are you in this consolidation doing away with?
None yet.
And which ones?
None yet. This is the options, that's all.
This is an option?
Nothing has been decided.
Okay, well, I just want to know with what I'm looking at here, which ones have been axed?
None.
None? Where's CARA?
CARA's going to be stayed, has to stay by law.
CARA what?
Has to stay.
Has to stay by law?
Yes.
Okay. So, all 19, this represents all 19?
No, this is just the ones that can be consolidated based on.
Okay, so, in the consolidation, here's my question. What I'm looking at right here, these three blocks, this is showing all of the citizen advisory groups being consolidated?
No.
No, okay.
Just the, so if you look at the transportation commission, it's the traffic safety commission,
Yep.
bicycling, pedestrian, and airport. That's it.
Yep.
The second one is Parks and Rec and City Tree.
Got it, that makes sense.
And the other one, create an Economic Development Advisory Commission, which includes the transit lodging taxes with the new Economic Development Commission. So, it'd be specifically for economic development. So, this would be a new commission.
A new commission made up of the people that are currently serving on these boards?
It depends if they're applying. I mean, they'd have to apply and go through the process again.
Well, if they're currently serving, we wouldn't make them, would you make them reapply? I want to understand what you're saying.
So, we don't have an Economic Development Commission.
Okay.
So, it'd be people that would apply for that particular commission. Now, some members of the TLT will apply, so they're eligible. It's just it's a new commission, new mission, new vision, all nine yards.
And this makes it easier for staff, because they would work with people who are staff relating to economic development?
Correct.
Is that it?
That's the gist of it.
Is that?
Yes, the City Manager to follow up on that.
It's with respect to the Economic Development Advisory Commission, it's not that it makes it easier for staff. We talked on January 15th, then again in February, about developing an economic development strategy for the city of Albany. So, what this does is recognize that we have many people in the community in many different sectors of the industry and the economy who could provide very good advice as we build that strategy. It would also include tourism as a sector, but it would include the rare metals industry, it would include development, real estate, hospital, medical, and so forth. At least, that's the preliminary vision that we've developed. I'd have to remind you that these are just options. So, if this is, if any one of these or all three of these are directions in which the council would like to travel, you need to tell us that, and we'll go back and work out the details and come back with a plan for you to approve. I think what you were asking, when you asked which had been axed, it's a total of three. So, instead of 19, you would now have 16.
And which three are you suggesting we do away with?
Well, it's not doing away with. It's taking the subject matter that traffic safety looks at, and bicycle and pedestrian, and airport, and combining those along with more broad systemic transportation issues into a transportation committee.
Okay.
And then, it would be taking the City Tree Commission and what they look at, which is exclusively our urban forestry program and efforts, and combining that into the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, those are, that's how you would recognize that efficiency of three, of reducing our number of advisory groups by three from 19 to 16.
Okay, so, again, forgive me for having to ask this yet again, but I guess it's taking a while to sink in. Which, so putting traffic and traffic safety, bicycle and pedestrian, and airport together is...
Yes, that's correct.
How are we going from 19 to 16? Forgive me, I'm not seeing it. What are you doing, what are you melding with what that was previously separate?
Traffic safety, bicycle and pedestrian, and airport.
Yes.
Three of them would turn into one.
One, okay.
So, that's a savings of two.
Got it, okay.
And then, Parks and Recreation and City Tree
Right.
would turn into one, that's a savings of one.
Got it, thank you. Sorry to have to hear it three times, but sometimes that's just what it takes.
That's fine, Counselor Olson. Any other councilor have any thoughts on this? Counselor Smith.
And I will comment close to the mic, as offensive as that is to me. I know that I've been a strong proponent of the transportation commission for a long time, and I think that's just, that's a natural merger. It solves the problem of having a couple of commissions that don't have a clear purpose. They were formed with good intent, but we never hear from them. We never give them work to do. They have quorum problems, and I believe if they had a, if they were part of a meaningful whole, such as a transportation commission, recognizing their purpose as part of the transportation system, which includes public transit, airplanes, bicycles, people walking, dogs, and all of the modes of transportation, that's where that belongs in a meaningful way. And I, the word meaningful keeps coming up, sorry to be repeating that, but we have lost good applicants for our boards and commissions because they couldn't find a fit that would be good for them, where they felt like they would be serving a real purpose. People, some people volunteer for appointment to government commissions to pad their resumes. It's true. Some of them are required by their employers to get involved in that way.
Yep.
It's, that's just life in the 21st century. But other people, people who are retired, people who are partially employed, people who don't need to work, people who want to be a part of their community, want to do something meaningful with their time. They want, they have other things that they're doing. They are volunteers in other ways. This is a different form of volunteering, but they want to do something that counts and that they can say, "I helped do that. I helped make that thing that's there," or "I helped this change the law so that my neighborhood is a better place." I think by doing these consolidations, it would really help give people a purpose and make their volunteer time valuable for them and for the community that they've chosen to represent. I really like the idea of an Economic Development Commission.
Oh, yeah.
Given our strategic plan, given our changing relationship in the economic development world, the change with our relationship to what used to be AMDEC, that's a, economic development is a key role for municipal government, and it's a key element of us, of a growing and healthy community. That's, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be growing without our economy being healthy. So, I think that's a great, modern look at the role of municipal government, and I strongly support that.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Counselor Johnson and Counselor Olson.
I'm sorry, missed my hand.
Okay, Counselor, thank you very much, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Olson?
Yes, I've got a question as to saving a whole lot of staff time. And take, for instance, the bicycle committee, bicycle and pedestrian. If there's little or no business, how long does it take staff to prepare for a meeting? I would think if there's little or nothing on the agenda, they would just be sending out notification to the people on that committee that a meeting time, and where you're meeting, and so forth. And if there's not much to discuss, it's more or less a chowder and marching society meeting, where those people get together and they have a chance to talk about bicycles in general and maybe talk about their dogs or their kids, or how blue the sky is, and then they go home. And I don't see that that puts a major load on the city staff. And if you have trouble finding people to be on these committees, open it up again where Ward 1 people can be on committees. And I don't have any problem at all finding people to be on committees. In fact, most people are glad to be asked. And I ask people that I think might have an interest in whatever committee vacancy I find in my situation. So, how much time does it take to organize a meeting like that?
Are you asking, City Manager going to respond to that?
Counselor Olson, you're absolutely right. It's if there's not much on the agenda, it does take less time. And I'll ask Mary Dibble to comment here in a minute, but it's not just creating agendas. It's also noticing the meeting, making sure that it's noticed properly. It's also staffing the security guard, if we have to staff the security guard. So, there are other considerations besides creating an agenda. But if you'll remember, I said at the end of our presentation that in the meantime, while council considers potential consolidations, administratively, there's a few things that we can do. We can reduce the number of meetings that we do from, you know, once every month to once a quarter, once every two months. And that does help to exercise stewardship over our resources as well. So, Mary, I don't know if you have any other comments?
Sure. I would just like to remind folks that our citizen advisory groups are still public bodies, and under that requirement, they still have to follow all Oregon state laws. So, whether a meeting takes 10 minutes or it takes two hours, there's still the exact same amount of time in terms of creating the agenda, notifying the media, producing a set of minutes. All of those key elements that make it a public meetings law still take place. And in terms of the contents that they're discussing during the meeting, they need to stick to the agenda with some variances, obviously, if things come up. But in terms of talking about things not on the agenda, then you turn into, then you're risking talking about items that the public hasn't been apprised that you're talking about. So, regardless of what group it is, how long the meeting takes, all those laws still apply. So, this is a way to make sure that we are using staff time to better get our arms around that and make sure that we are being legal and appropriate and a good use of staff time.
Well, I'd like to ask then, how many staff people are you going to remove if you had this consolidation?
Remove meaning what? Terminate?
Well, if you had this consolidation, it won't take so many staff people to run City Hall, and do you plan to reduce the number of staff people in City Hall?
So, I think, so I'll have the City Manager respond, but this is one element of one of their duties, it's not their whole job. So, there won't be, would there be no need to remove people from their employment? But I'll let the City Manager follow it up.
That's correct, Mayor. The amount of time that we're talking about here is a resource, and it's a resource that staff can be spending on any one of a number of other workload items that we have. Right now, it's not a question of having excess capacity and thereby if somehow we reduce by one or two or three committees, that we could then lay somebody off. There are currently shortages in each of the departments, if you'll remember the downsizing that we've done in recent years. So, there's not enough savings in terms of FTE or full-time equivalency that would allow you to cut a staff person. But there is enough savings to allow staff to be assigned to other priorities.
Well, I find that that's a fairly weak argument to my way of thinking. But the big objection I have here is that you have a committee, transportation, for instance, where some people are interested in whether we have roundabouts or stoplights. Some people are interested in airports and airplanes. Some people are interested in bicycles and pedestrian safety. And if you have then a committee of six people, everybody that's interested in one of those factors is going to be in a minority. And I would think that public input and any kind of, not forceful, but meaningful, public suggestion as to what to do would be pretty much nullified. And I think it's a good way for staff to pretty much muzzle and muffle the public. And I'm opposed to this proposal.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Any other councils have anything?
Yes.
Well, she hasn't been called on all night, so Counselor Bartholomew.
Thank you. I am very happy to hear about this option.
Find out who's talking.
Can you speak up, Counselor?
Counselor Bartholomew.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Olson. I appreciate the options that we have and the description of meaningful activity. All of those, the discussions that we've been having have helped me to, you know, come to more of an acceptance at first, when we talked about this, I think, six months ago or so. Also, a year ago, I was brand new, and I did not, I was like, whoa, wait a minute. This is how I got my start. But now, I am seeing, I definitely have the desire to engage more meaningfully, and I have had people ask me about the Economic Commission and being involved in doing, developing that, and have had a difficult time finding folks for traffic safety. And so, I think that maybe there could be a compromise in terms of opening up that specific transportation commission to have a few more members equalize the pieces, like have 10 members, so that there be several for each emphasis. At any rate, I think that this, this option is helpful for our city. And should we be, you know, at some time later, we can expand again if that is, you know, it's seen as something that the citizenry wants to engage in.
Thank you, Counselor. Are you done?
Thank you.
Counselor Novak, you're next up.
Thank you. I really haven't experienced a whole lot of difficulty in finding people to serve on various commissions. My experience in the year that I've served has been more that people are happy to be asked, and they are very interested in serving, unless for some reason they can't, then you go on to someone else. And I think that we've been all very good as councilors in referring people to one another and helping one another fill gaps. I share Counselor Olson's concern that some of these groups may not, it may not be as effective to lump them together as others. Maybe some things you can slide together and it's fine, but I do think that there is a distinct possibility, if not inevitability, of losing public input by combining some of these. I think he raises a good point when he says, for instance, you know, people who are interested in airport concerns don't share the same concerns with the people who are concerned with bicycle. My, the gentleman that I put on the bicycle and pedestrian commission, he's been biking for decades, and I just can't see that he would necessarily want to focus in a meeting on something that wasn't his particular, that's his heart. That's what this man has done for, I don't know, 50, 60 years. So, I do a little bit struggle with combining. I think that there are some of these groupings. Could you put those three back up on the screen for me yet again, please? Some are maybe more amenable to being grouped up than others. I really think that traffic safety, bicycle and pedestrian, how about we talk to the people that are currently serving in these positions? How about we talk to the people that are currently serving in these positions and see, did we get any input from them about whether they see enough commonality that they would handle working together and bringing their concerns into one meeting every other month? Have we reached out to the people who are currently serving?
So one of the things they're doing today is getting direction, they're getting direction from us.
Yes.
So they haven't done it yet.
Okay. Well, I think, does it make sense to anyone besides me that that might be a good course of action to reach out to those people that are currently serving?
I think Counselor Kupczynski had a response or question.
Invariably, any committee commission that comes up with a suggestion, it always has to come before us as council to do anything with that suggestion. And so I would suggest that any people that still have an interest in their particular point of view expertise, it is incumbent upon them to contact their city councillor to bring it to our attention so that we can bring it before the whole council and discuss it like we would normally do. So I don't believe that we're going to have a loss of advice from people. I think it gives them a more pointed way to get the advice to us who have to make the final decision.
So what I would recommend is that we ask the staff to go back and find out if they had any input or questions for us. And then they're going to watch this video and then see, and get the calls as soon as possible, I imagine. And so I think Counselor Kupczynski is right, and I think you're right as well, and that we'd like to get that feedback. But we have to give the staff direction to do that.
Of course. I mean, now that you remind me.
So Counselor Olson?
Yes. I'd like to point out, but the reason we have these committees and commissions is so that we can get meaningful advice. Now, if various factions on these combined committees are coming to us individually to argue their point of view, we really nullify the whole point of having the committees and commissions. And I want to point out, too, that we serve almost totally as volunteers. I think I still get $165 a month that I appreciate. But most of the time I spend is pennies on the hour, and I think most of the rest of you do, too, if you spend much time on city council business. So I'm really in favor of having effective committees rather than kind of a hodgepodge that, of people who are primarily interested in something, but they are always in a minority on their committee that they serve on. Again, I'll emphasize that point.
Thank you, Counselor. I know one of the things I've heard is timing of the meetings is important. Some of the people, some people don't apply because of the time of the meeting. I've did, I have made a request to change times of the meeting, and then the liaison, staff liaison went out and requested a review of the time change, and they actually changed the time of the meeting. So that's one thing they can do. And there's also people that approached me and said, why apply? There's never any turnover, there's never any new people. And so it's important for us also to think about that, bringing fresh blood on, fresh ideas on those councils as well. So what we want to, so we want to give the city councillor an opportunity, and then we're going to give direction and we'll move on.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up two things, and I'll defer to the city attorney and the clerk. Both Counselor Johnson and Counselor Bartholomew brought up the idea that having more voices on an economic development advisory commission or a transportation commission would be a good thing. Now, there is a precedent for that, and you could probably make that or those commissions nine people if you wanted to do so. And you probably could also stipulate that you wanted a certain skill set. You wanted somebody who was an expert in mass transit, or somebody who was an expert in aviation, or in the economic development, that you want somebody who's a representative of rare metals and so forth. So I just wanted to clarify that for you, so you know that's a possibility.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Dick, your hand's still up. You can go ahead and drop it, or you're done?
Oh, I didn't take it down, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But I'm thinking that the manager's suggestion makes it even more difficult to fill out the membership of these committees.
Thank you, Counselor. So Counselor, you want to give direction to staff now, or do you want to hold off until another time?
Go.
So go ahead and put together a proposal, please. First of all, anybody, thumbs up if you support going forward with some of the new options.
Excuse me, what are we going forward with? I just want to...
Direction for the staff.
I can't hear you, Alex.
Going forward with, requesting staff to come back with recommendations, what that would look like.
I'm sorry, come back with recommendations?
To what that changes would look like and the impact of those changes. We don't have to vote on it now, just go back and bring us more information so we can look at it again.
Okay. And that would include reaching out to people who are currently serving on these committees?
We can put that in.
Yeah, I would like that. I would like some feedback from the people who are currently serving.
And so what I would ask you to do, all the councils, to go out, reach out to your appointees and say, get us some information, send it in, so we can have that in our packet. That make sense?
Well, I don't want to, if staff is reaching out to the people on the commission, you want us to reach out to the people that we've nominated as well?
I'm going to reach out to mine tomorrow.
Okay. But I'm just saying, so am I reaching out to the people that are serving that I have appointed to these commissions and saying, you're going to be getting a communication from staff with regard to potential consolidation?
Let me see how the city manager would like to handle it.
When we leave this evening and when we're going forward, we'll come back with a plan. And part of that plan will be to, I apologize for the popping sound. Part of that will be to reach out to members of each of these commissions, as well as to others, as to staff, as to, so you don't need to worry about that. You can, if you will, and you're personally welcome to let them know that they'll be hearing from us. And depending on how fast you work, you'll probably beat us to it, so. But it's not necessary. We will take care of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on the direction that you're being given, or that we're, we are directing them to what exactly? What are we directing them, staff, to do?
To bring, Counselor Smith?
I wanted to clarify that I believe the direction we're giving to staff is to pursue these three options that were on the slide, consolidating the five into two and creating an economic development commission.
We would bring back more information, and none of this would happen until the council voted for resolutions and ordinances making the changes. So at this point, we would just bring back more information. Nothing would be final.
Okay. And that would include, though, reaching out to the people who are currently serving with regard to these consolidations and getting feedback from them.
I see, Counselor Olson. Counselor Olson, you're next up.
Thank you. Am I out now?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay. Looks to me like we're going to have to kick two-thirds of the people off, most of these committees and commissions. And it's a poor way to make friends and influence people. When I was on, first on the council in 1973, I didn't reappoint one of my neighbors to the planning commission. She was missed. And the unfortunate thing is, she was a good friend of my now ex-wife. And it was an unfortunate situation. So I don't know what the easy way is to tell two-thirds of the people that are personally on our committees and commissions, sorry, we don't want to have your advice.
So today, we're not doing that. We're just getting more information.
No, but we're heading in that direction.
Well, it's going to be all of us looking at that data and making a decision at that point. So I'm not going to raise red flags until we actually have more data from the staff. So thank you very much for your, so Peter, go forth and bring back more information for us. Mary, thank you for your time this evening. Peter, thank you for your time. Next up on the agenda is business from the council. My dais would be Counselor Novak.
Yeah, I had a question with regard to that. I'm wondering if you could, unless you already have, and I just don't know it, could you send us those three groupings in an email or something so that when I'm speaking to the people that I've appointed to these commissions, I can present to them what staff is looking into?
Sure.
I'd be happy to do that. I'll do that tomorrow morning, and then I'll also, there are some of these current groups that actually have vacancies, so I'll let you know what those vacancies are, too, because we wouldn't be contacting...
All right, thank you.
Wouldn't be contacting all of them since some are vacant. I'll send that out in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Novak. So you're first up for business from the council?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't know if you all saw a letter from Mr. Jeffrey Evans that was sent out to the council with regard to a very important housing commission, which is a temporary citizen advisory group. I am somewhat, I don't know, appalled is a strong word, but I do feel rather strongly, because this is a very important situation here. We've put people that have expertise onto a housing task force, a task force unlike typical citizen advisory groups, has a limited time of service, I believe, like 18 months. They have met once, February 2nd. My understanding was that nothing was accomplished at that meeting. They have tried to make other meetings, and they put something out there and it was rescinded, put something out there again and it's rescinded. I just think this is so important, how can we...
That's not accurate, no.
That's not accurate? I'm really glad to hear that.
They came up with a schedule, and it's every two months. So that is inaccurate. It's not a monthly meeting, it's every two months. So the next one, it was February, April, so it's every two months.
So they are going to, because I'd like to know that they're going to be able to do something constructive and give input with regard to this incredibly important issue?
Yeah, we're having the meetings, that's...
Okay. All right. But that, because I was concerned when...
So I will say this, Mr. Evans is Mr. Evans, and he misunderstood the meetings, what the structure was.
He misunderstood what? I didn't hear you, sir.
The timing of the meetings.
He misunderstood the time...
The timing of the meetings, the frequency of the meetings.
He also...
I called him when I saw it.
Okay. All right, well, I just want to say, he shared information with me from the first meeting, and I was left sort of flummoxed at how that meeting played out. And maybe you're going to tell me that that's Mr. Evans being Mr. Evans, but I just, okay then, fine, we'll talk privately. But that was one concern, because I am very much concerned about the housing task force and that they give and have an opportunity to provide good input for us. So if that's happening and that's going to happen, good, that's...
And the staff are doing a great job of making sure that things happen.
All right. I really want to believe you. Okay. So I can't recall if I had anything else that I want. Oh, yes, there is one more thing that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention again, because to a degree, we're face to face, sort of. And that is the information that I shared with you about how our water supply in Albany is fluoridated. And that was apparently done with an ordinance that was voted in, and I'd like to vote it out. I shared with you multiple links about the unhealthy aspects of fluoridation, and I really hope that at some point, we can do something about that. And I don't want to let it go on any longer than it needs to. I'd really like to put that on the table, on the agenda at some point, and deal with it if we could, sir.
So are you asking staff to bring back a report or some data on that?
I would just, no, I have data. I've done research and I've shared...
But we have the public works director, that's our job.
To what?
To bring back the data on that.
I don't, okay, I don't understand, because I don't know, Director Bailey, what sort of data would you need to give me in order for us to vote against an ordinance that was voted in many, many years ago?
Hello, Counselor Novak. Well, I can bring back information on the regulations around fluoridation, drinking water, and how we do that, and all the information that we have on our sampling and reporting from, for over the years. But in order to rescind the ordinance, all you need to do is make a motion and get four people to vote for it, in my opinion. Counselor Sean might have a different idea, but if you make a motion and four people vote yes, then we don't have to do it.
Am I able to do that in business of the council?
No.
No? All right, may I respectfully request to whomever, because I thought from my understanding from our city manager that it was as simple as that. So if there's a way to get that put on the Wednesday agenda, I would be ever so grateful.
Well, first of all, I would want to, this Wednesday agenda, I need more information. I can't just, we shouldn't move that fast. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
To the attorney?
Thank you. If we're going to put that on the agenda, then I would recommend we put it on the agenda, we have enough time to advertise it so the public knows ahead of time. If we put it on for Wednesday, they probably don't have enough time.
There's not enough time for Wednesday.
Yes, but we could certainly do that, and we could advertise it, that it's going to be on the agenda for a vote, and then the public could come in and speak on it if they want to.
Thank you.
Sometime in April?
That'd be great, yeah. Whenever it is soon enough to, you know, properly notice it on an agenda for a meeting. That would be swell. Thank you.
Well, I would like to hear from scientists, people with the skill sets and knowledge to make a determination. Thank you. Anything else, Counselor Novak?
Nope.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Okay, I wasn't going to have anything, but I'll just state right up front, I am 100% adamantly opposed to doing any attempt to try and remove fluoride from our water, and I will be going forward also. I'm done.
That's fine. We don't have to agree. We've certainly disagreed in the past.
Counselor Smith?
I agree with Counselor Kupczynski, that's all I have to say this evening.
Counselor Olson, anything from business from the council?
Yes. A couple of years ago, talking about fluoride, I asked my dentist what he thought about fluoridating public water. And he said, some reports are that that is the best thing that's been done for public health ever. That was my dentist's comment. And I'll say that my personal experience is that my father had all his teeth removed, and he had false teeth from about the age, he must have been about 45 years old, and he had had dentures from that time on. My personal experience is that I had the same problem with my teeth, and when I moved to Albany, tooth decay pretty much disappeared. I still have gaps in my teeth, but not as bad as I probably would have. And then there's my two kids, they grew up here in Albany. And Jerry has one small filling, and Rachel is filling free. She has absolutely no tooth decay. So there may be other problems, but I would need some fairly solid evidence to convince me to vote against fluoride. I do have another concern, and that is, there are a couple of street trees left on the block where I go to church. It's a faith listener church on the intersection of Queen and Elm. And the two remaining street trees I see are marked with the ribbons and the paint crosses on them, and I'm afraid that means removal of the trees. Now, they are fairly small, ancient street trees that I think are still alive. The trees, the leaves haven't come out yet, but I looked at the sidewalk, the sidewalks are not being lifted. And I'm wondering, are these trees slated to be removed? Can anybody that's there tonight say yes or no to that? Probably not.
Counselor Olson, Director Bailey's coming your direction.
Okay.
Are you coming up, Director Bailey? Yeah, she's making her way up here.
I don't see her on the...
She's coming.
Okay.
Sorry, I was trying to get information from Stacy. Stacy has the details, so I think I'll just hand it to her.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Can you hear me okay, Counselor Olson?
I can.
Okay. And so we do have a project on Queen Avenue that includes rehabilitating the street from Highway 99E west to the city limits. As part of that project, we've identified some trees that will need to be removed for various reasons. I don't know the specifics on the trees that were identified at Queen and Elm, but I can talk to Chris Circluski, who's the engineer on the project, and we can take a look at them again. We do have a contractor on board. We issued a request for co... We issued a request for quotations and we have a contractor on board to remove the trees. I think they're scheduled to be removed sometime at the end of this month, but I can talk to the engineer on the project and then follow up and discuss the trees with you. I know that they were very careful on identifying what trees had to be removed and tried to minimize the impact.
Are you widening the street or what are you doing?
The street improvements include rehabilitation, removal and replacement of some sidewalk and there's a new water line, there's storm improvements. If the trees that were identified, they were, like you said, there's trees that, they grow under the sidewalk, under the street, and so they impact the improvements in the right of way. It could be a utility conflict or it could be just that the trees in poor condition, all of the trees that are identified for our street to be removed with our street projects, we consult with the city forester and sometimes even have an arborist take a look at them. We take it very seriously.
Well, we seem to be well on the process of becoming a treeless city. And little treelets get replanted, but they're not going to do any good for the next couple of decades. So I'm going to register an objection to removing these trees, these two trees.
Thank you.
And I see them on the other side of the street and I see them in the other blocks around there. So it looks like a tree removal project in general, but-
Thank you, Stacy, for coming up, appreciate it.
And I am on the church council there, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick, Counselor Olson. Counselor Johnson, do you have anything?
Just a couple little things. First thing, it's nothing to do with council, but I just want to say I've been watching UCLA and they're doing well and for the first time in forever, the South Dakota State, University of South Dakota is going to the Sweet 16 with the women's tournament and so a little town in South Dakota is going to the Sweet 16. So I think that's great. The other thing is I need to find out if, I mean, this has been quite a March madness, if city manager, maybe you can say, do we have any budget meetings scheduled yet?
We do not have any scheduled. But there is, with one exception, Counselor Johnson, Gina Jaeger is putting together some budget training for the budget committee.
Right, yeah, because I was, my granddaughter is graduating at the end of May and so I just want to kind of find out ahead of time if, I mean, we have priorities here. She's one of them that we raised for three or four years and so I was like, you know, even the budget committee wouldn't hold me here.
Counselor Johnson, are you referring to this May or next May of '23?
This May.
Okay, remember, we're on a biennial budget, so there won't be any meetings in this day.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to find out to make sure. So we will meet though at one point, right?
You'll meet for training, but again, we're on a biennial budget, so whereas the budget committee used to meet annually, now it's on a biennial cycle.
Okay, because I thought of the last biennial when it wasn't the actual budget, the first year I thought we met. Maybe that was because it was brand new and we needed to get to it. So, okay, hey, that's fine. I mean, if you're not going to have a meeting, gosh, twist my arm.
Thank you.
That's all I have here, Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Olson, we're moving on, but we have another meeting starting in a few seconds. Counselor Bartholomew, you have anything?
Yes, thank you. It's, we transitioned from virtual to live meetings and there's a little bit of joy and a little bit of sadness because my daughter would occasionally join in on the meetings because they were virtual and she would pay attention. She's 14, at eighth grade in Memorial Middle School, and she would ask questions and it was a good opportunity. And I wish that more kids would be involved and at least one child in Albany is becoming more educated about the political system. And because she was listening, she heard that the mayor was going to different schools and she goes, is he going to come to my school? And so I think that's, I think Mayor Johnson said he would look into that, so thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
That's it.
So I thank you very much, Counselor Bartholomew. I did visit several schools. I want to thank the communications director or the officer, Matt Harrington, for coordinating those events. Lots of young people are watching us and I think they're watching us and they're paying more attention than I've ever seen for young people. I have received several letters in the mail, but one in particular, very special. I received a letter from a young man named Miles, he's a first grader. And so he sent me a request to do a cleanup project in his neighborhood and I wrote back a response card and I said, please give my business card to your mother and father and have them give me a call, set up a time for a talk. And the father called me and says, my son ran down the driveway with this card saying, the mayor wrote me a letter. So tomorrow, because it's spring break, I'm meeting with him and Dad to talk about their project. So the letters these young people send me are about their community, about what they've seen in the city. They're watching and they're actually speaking up saying, hey, this is not right or this looks good or can we do more of this? So I'd like to thank you all. The planning meeting starts in a minute. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn, oh, city manager's moment. Counselor Olson, we have the city manager and we have to start the planning meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll just make it very quick. I'm also happy to be back and I hope your daughter keeps watching. The Rear Front Community Center's grand opening is Thursday. I hope that you can attend. I want to remind you that the League of Oregon City's public budgeting sessions are available, but we need to have you registered by Wednesday if you're interested in doing that. And lastly, we'll get fluoridation on the agenda. We'll cover, we'll look into the science of it, the costs of it and the legislative history behind it. So that's all I have, Mayor, and thank you.
At this time, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and I will see you all Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM here in Chambers, also on hybrid. And thank you very much. We'll be now starting the planning commission in five minutes.
Could I make a comment first, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Yes. It sounds like we're not going to have any discussion of budgetary situation until after I'm off the council, is that correct?
Peter?
Well, the next budget, the development of the next budget is, starts in December, January coming up. So I don't know what your intent is for the next term, Counselor Olson, but that's when that budget development is scheduled to happen. Now, we can, you know, if you have-
Yeah, that's the budget itself, but it seems to me we need to have some discussion about how our present budget is coming along and are we satisfied with it?
We can certainly provide a budget update for you at any time that the council would like, certainly.
Well, I think this council ought to consider that maybe we should be talking about our budget.
Well, I think, I thought we had a supplemental budget to look at.
You may have a supplemental budget to look at and we also have labor negotiations. There are many occasions where the budget will come up as a matter of deep interest.
Okay, well, with all this reorganization, I was wondering if we were going to be able to comment about budget stuff.
So I think we'll just talk to Counselor Johnson about her graduation and kind of schedule around that. We'd like to have her present.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Really would appreciate that, thank you.
All right, let's go and adjourn the meeting and the planning commission is looking at me like they want to hurt me, so I got to go. So I'll talk to you later.